Members of council, can I have members of council please push their buttons, please? Quorum call. I just want to know how many people are here.
Members of council, we're having a roll call. Would you please press one of the buttons to indicate your presence in the chamber? Counselor Perutzis, please.
Counselor Philian, please.
Counselor Pasternak, please.
Quorum is present. There are 27 members in the chamber.
Okay, 27 members. Okay, this meeting is now resumed. Members, before the recess, council was debating deferred item LS 20.1. Before we return to that item, I would take the release of member holds. Now, I do have a number of motions to introduce, but we don't have 30 members, so we'll have to do that at another time. Quick releases? Counselor Pasternak, quick release. Counselor Pasternak?
Yes, no, thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to release, or sorry, refer back to staff MM 32.1, the North York Women's Shelter, and get some more information on how best to help them. And I think people will like that idea, so it's, I have a motion drafted by staff to refer this back.
Okay, so if we can put the motion on the screen, page four, MM 32.1, Counselor Pasternak is referring, referring to the next council meeting?
No.
Oh, it's on the screen, sorry.
It doesn't come back. We're going to work, we're going to work with staff and the shelter to, to come up with a solution.
Okay, the amendments on the screen?
Recorded vote?
Recorded vote.
Counselor Perutzis, please. Counselor Leighton, when you're seated. Counselor Crissanti, we'll give you a moment when you're seated, please.
The item carries unanimously, 30 in favor.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Pasternak?
Yes, I have another one. Just for clarification, there are actually two commuter parking motions. One is EX 2731.
What page, please?
It's page seven. So, that's the one I've held, and the motion actually asked to hold public information sessions for the planned partial closing of the Wilson subway station. Well, it's already, it's already partially closed, so what I've, what I've done here is I've asked staff to report back to the executive committee, if we put the motion on the ground, we're going to send this back, and ask staff to report back to the executive committee on a public engagement strategy for plan pending.
No, and we're also dealing with item EX 2711.
All right, this is, this is a separate item, okay.
Okay, continue holding it. Counselor Shiner?
Madam Speaker, on page 17, CC 32.6, 4 and 6 Tippet Road, staff have answered my questions. I am prepared to release it.
Okay, on page 17, CC 32.6, 4 and 6 Tippet Road, Counselor Shiner is releasing, on favor, carried, Counselor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Page seven, EX 27.28, official plan amendment, I can release that.
EX 2728?
Yes.
Okay, on page seven, EX 2728, Counselor Grimes is releasing, hold on. Page seven. On favor, carried.
Also on page 12, EY 24.54, request for attends at Toronto local appeal body hearing at 3836th Street. I circulated amendment, staff asked me to move, I think I'm changing request and put direct. Staff just wanted me to change the wording on that, which I've done, so it's the intention still to uphold the community adjustment decision at the local appeal body.
Okay, so that's, the, the motion is on the screen.
Recorded vote.
Page 12, VY 24.54, recorded vote. On the amendments, on the screen. Are you okay with it, Counselor Holliday?
Counselor Perutzis, please. Counselor DiGiorgio. Counselor McMahon, when you're seated. Counselor Perks, please.
The motion carries 34 to 1.
Counselor Cressy?
Thank you, Speaker. On page seven, item HL 21.12, urgent additional measures to address the overdose crisis, I'm prepared to release that. I understand Counselor Mahavik has a quick amendment.
Okay, Counselor Mahavik, what is your amendment?
Staff to put it on the board, it comes as the fruit from, it comes as the fruit of conversations with the provincial ministry of health on advocacy to the federal minister of health, and to, and to engage the civic innovation office as well in the process on the go-forward basis.
So this is on page seven, HL 21.12, urgent additional measures to address the overdose crisis in Toronto. The amendments on the screen, on favor, carried.
I have one more speaker.
Hold on.
He said recorded vote.
Item is amended, on favor, carried.
Record, record vote.
Oh, recorded vote. On item as amended. It's page seven, HL 21.12.
Counselor Crawford, please.
Counselor McMahon, please, and thank you. Counselor Leighton. Counselor Pasternak, please.
The item is amended, carries unanimously, 34 in favor.
Counselor Davis? Counselor Cressy?
Thank you, Speaker. And on page 10, item PG 22.12, TO Corp., proposed downtown plan, I'm prepared to release that. Okay.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Speaker. It's on page 10, PE 21.2, donation of International Mother Language Day monument in Taylor Creek Park, and I wonder if I could just say very quickly that I want to thank our Parks, Forestry and Recreation staff for the incredible work they did with the Bangladeshi community and others.
And the chair?
Yes. Of the Parks Committee to accept this donation, which is an affirmation and representation of the UNESCO Declaration of International Mother Language Day and the rights of all peoples to use their first language, their mother tongue. So I want to thank you, to all of our staff who were so very helpful in making this happen, and to the committee who worked so hard with them.
Thank you. On favor, carried, Counselor Mahavik?
Yes, thank you very much, my apologies. Page nine at the bottom, disposition of Spadina Expressway properties memorandum of understanding with Infrastructure Ontario. Believe it or not, we've been working on this for 20 years, 20 years, and now we're at the next step, the promise knows what it's doing, we know what we're doing, so I'm happy to move the staff recommendations.
Who said hold?
No, no, he's kidding, he's kidding.
You can do what you.
Page nine at the bottom of the page, GM 22.32, disposition of Spadina Expressway properties, on favor, carried. Counselor DeCiano?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. I can release two items. Page four, CC 32.1, the development charges bylaw, the OMB appeal by Canada Lands Corp. and Downsview Park, I spoke with staff, and happy to release that, as well as page nine.
Okay, let's do this one first. On page four, CC 32.1, development charges bylaw, OMB.
Recorded vote?
Board appeal by Canada Lands, recorded vote. Recorded vote.
Counselor Caragianus, please.
The item carries 34 to 1.
Counselor DeCiano?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And page nine, GM 22.11, the non-competitive contracts for track vehicle repair in Lightner, Palma Canada Inc. for proprietary parts and services, I've spoken with staff and can release that as well.
Okay, on page nine, the top of the page, GM 22.11, Counselor DeCiano is releasing, on favor, carried. Counselor Perks?
Thank you, Speaker, and good evening. On page 11, PW 23.7, Waste Reduction Community Investment Program Pilot Phase, I've spoken to the general manager, and I'm, I'm now satisfied, and I can release it.
Okay, on page 11, PW 23.7, Waste Reduction Community Investment Program, Counselor Perks is releasing, on favor, carried. Counselor Crissanti?
On page six, Madam Speaker, 27.21, I could release this item, but I'd like to request a recorded vote on the two recommendations separately.
Okay, we can put them on the screen?
Okay.
Okay, there's part one, it's on the screen. Can't re, I can't read it.
Counselor Perutzis, please. Counselor DiGiorgio?
Recommendation one carries 36 to 2.
Okay, part two.
Counselor Palacio, please.
Counselor Perutzis, please. Counselor DiGiorgio, thank you.
Recommendation two carries 34 to 4.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Speaker. I have two items. The first one is on page nine, GM 2222, waiving late payment penalties and fees for property taxes. I'd like to have a recorded vote on this item, please.
That's on page nine, GM 22.22?
If it's available. Yeah. Okay, move it, and we'll get it done.
Okay, Counselor Perks?
Yeah, so I'm moving the motion there. Just 10 seconds, what it does, in the attachment one, it lays out a schedule for who has what authority, on how much relief to give, it goes up to 50,000. My thought is, and we don't currently have any forgiveness program, my thought is, at 10,000, you have the ability to protect people who are homeowners and have hardship, but beyond that, you're into, you know, much, much bigger properties, and for now, those should come to council.
Okay, on the amendment, on favor, carried, item is amended, on favor, recorded vote.
Counselor Perutzis, thank you. Counselor McMahon, please.
Counselor Robinson, please, thank you, and Counselor Mahavik, thank you.
The item is amended, carries 37 to 1.
Okay, do you have another one? Counselor Thompson?
Yep, I said I had two. Thank you, Speaker. The next one's on page 12, NY 24.3, request for direction report, official plan amendment and zoning bylaw amendment application, 5840, 5868 and 5870 Young Street. I've had my questions answered from staff, and I can release that.
Okay, that's on page 12, NY 24.3, a direction report for 5840, 68 and 70 Young Street, on favor, carried. Counselor Leighton?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On page six, EX 27.24, adjustments to the 2017 to 2026 capital budget and plan for transportation services, I'm prepared to move the budget committee recommendations.
Okay, so can we put those recommendations on the screen? Okay. This is on page six, EX 27.24, adjustment to the 2017-26 capital budget for transportation services, King Liberty Pedestrian Bridge. Okay, it's on the screen? On favor, carried. No, I was here without recommendation. Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page seven, CD 22.3, Ontario Early Years Child and Family Centers Planning and Implementation Update.
I'm sorry, what, what item was that?
CD 22.3, originally Counselor Campbell had it held, and then I held it.
Oh, yes, that's right, yes, sorry, yes.
It shifted to me, so I'd like to release that. I spoke to staff earlier today, and I'm fine with this.
Okay, on page seven, CD 22.3, Counselor Robinson is releasing, on favor, carried. Counselor Carmichael Grab?
Thank you. On page 13, NY 24.19, pedestrian safety corridor Avenue Road between Lawrence Avenue West and Eglinton Avenue West, I have a slight technical amendment for it. This is from staff.
Okay, we'll put it on the screen.
I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on this, to make Avenue Road a safer place.
Counselor Burnside said he would still like to hold it. So remain in your name. Counselor Ainsley.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page 11, PG 22.8, Approval of the 2017 Toronto Heritage Grant Awards. I have my questions answered by staff and I can release that.
Okay, on page 11, PG 22.8, Approval of 2017 Toronto Heritage Grant Awards. Counselor Ainsley is releasing. On favor. Did somebody say hold? Recorded vote? Recorded vote. Okay, recorded vote.
Counselor Carrigan, please. Counselor Thompson. Counselor Perutz.
Counselor De Ciano, please.
Counselor Carrigan, thank you.
The item carries unanimously 39 in favor.
Okay, seeing that we have 30 members in the council chambers, we can do the introductions of the members' motions. Who's first? Cressy? Counselor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker.
You have three.
I have three. This is urgent on account of an upcoming AGCO hearing.
On favor. Carried. Okay.
This is urgent on account of detailed planning construction is to commence imminently.
On favor. Carried.
And this last one is urgent, following a provincial government announcement last week. Because staff need to get working on this in order to meet the 2018 tax season. And thank you to the mayor for seconding it.
On favor. Carried. Okay, so those motions would be circulated. Counselor Thompson, you have two.
Yes, I have two. This one is a settlement regarding 1680 Brimley in my ward. It's an OMB settlement.
On favor. Carried. The motions would be circulated, Deputy Mayor, so if you want to hold them down.
Thank you, Speaker. This next one is a motion from staff as it provides authorization for the applicant to initiate a manovarance at the address 37 Kekala Road.
On favor. Carried. Counselor Wong Tam, you have four.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. The first one is to introduce this particular matter, 94 the Espinade. It is time-sensitive because it's going to a hearing at the AGCO.
On favor. Carried.
The second one is also urgent because we're getting ready to tender with respect to big park renovations coming to Queen's Park North. We've been working on it for some time, since 2011, and we're very excited that's finally before us.
On favor. Carried.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This matter is urgent because over the past few weeks, we've had four pedestrian deaths in Toronto. As we know, pedestrian deaths have seen an increase over the last five years, and if we can do more at city council to prevent that, then we certainly should.
On favor. Carried. Recorded vote? What? You can't hold it until it's been introduced. Because there's nothing to hold at this point. Wait for it to be circulated, then you can hold it. Huh? That's what I'm saying. No.
Counselor Holland, please. Counselor Mahavik. Counselor Cressy.
Counselor Kelly, please. Counselor Perutz. Counselor Di Giorgio, please. And Counselor Carroll.
The motion carries 34 to 5.
Hold.
There's one more.
Once it's circulated, then Counselor Robinson, you can hold it. Okay. Right now, we're just introducing it. Well, when it comes forward, when we go through the members' motions, tomorrow, when we go through the members' motions, it doesn't matter who moved it, anybody can hold it. Okay, what's the next item?
It is 60...
Counselor Wong Tam.
Yes, this is the last one, Madam Speaker, and thank you. This motion is urgent. It's actually a technical amendment, and the staff have prepared the motion for this.
On favor. Carried.
Thank you.
Counselor Crawford, you have two.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is... Oh, this is for the Civic Theatres Board. It's urgent because we need to get somebody onto the board as quickly as possible.
On favor. Carried.
And the second one, we... Urgent because we want to commence the work at this baseball field this fall. Thanks.
On favor. Carried. Counselor Cole.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a... This motion is for report requests and some requests of Metrolinks to help support businesses on Eglinton during construction. The reason for urgency is that I fear there won't be any businesses left if we don't move on this.
On favor. Carried. That's it? Okay, so the motions are going to be circulated. When we go through members' motions, any of the motions that members of council want to hold down, they can hold those motions down at the appropriate time. We'll now go back to the item that we were debating. We can put the speaker's list up. And I believe we still have two more questioners. Counselor Mahavik, you're next.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll try to be quick here. To the Director or General Manager of MLS, are you aware of the public health report from Vancouver, just focusing on the public health issue that was done a few years ago that reviewed best practices and literature on backyard hens?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Not the Vancouver one specifically, though I do know there are guidance documents around backyard hens from a variety of sources.
And the conclusion is, just if you could articulate again, that from a public health perspective, all other things being equal, and they never are, of course, because there are good dog owners or bad dog owners, there are good cat owners or bad cat owners, all of the things being... All things being equalized, that the possession of backyard hens is no more dangerous to human health than any other of those critters.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly the guidance, even in respect to the CDC information I provided previously, the guidance from the veterinarian for the CDC did note that this does not preclude people from backyard hens, but that the proper precautions, health precautions, need to be taken in all circumstances.
Just like with dogs, just like with cats.
With every other type of animal, reptiles as well, Carrie Salmonell.
Thank you. Does the bylaw allow for pigeons, the current bylaw?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, they do.
Does the bylaw allow for rabbits?
Yes, it does.
Does it allow for guinea pigs?
They are not prohibited, so they are permitted.
So there's a variety of animals that we already have that are allowed under the current bylaw. In terms of who else is doing it, you are aware that there are many cities, I think you listed some of them, in Canada that allow backyard hens. In the United States, would it be fair to say the New York, Portland, I'm just thinking allow Detroit, Chicago, Los Angeles, Houston, Miami, Dallas? Like, there's virtually top 20 cities in the United States, well over a few million people, all of them allow hens.
So through you, Madam Speaker, I can't speak to all of them, Counselor Mahavik. I do know New York City and Chicago, Las Vegas, and Los Angeles do permit them.
Right. Okay, thank you. In Europe, is it not the case that most, in fact, I... Could be all, of major metropolitan areas also allow backyard hens?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I don't have a jurisdictional scan of Europe in its entirety, though I do have a staff member that just returned from Amsterdam and indicated that there are a lot of backyard hens there.
Correct. And in terms of the motion, I'm moving a motion. I think your office had input into that motion. Is I not correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes. At the last council meeting, we assisted with a motion in respect to a pilot.
And then also you had input into, in fact, you had major input into the motion that is coming from the Chair of the Committee. I think it's going to be moved by Counselor De Ciano. Is that fair to say?
Through you, Madam Speaker. My memory is fading on that one particularly. If you say we were involved, then I'll believe we were involved.
Yes. Those two motions basically allow you to do all the things that you need to do to make sure that this issue is contextualized appropriately and that we as a city have enough control over this process to make sure that it doesn't frankly spin out of control. Not that it will, but if it did, we would have those tools. Would that be fair to say?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, sir. I do recall there were additional pieces to the motion that we were asked to prepare with your... To assist you, that did give us the parameters that we could set out terms and conditions of participation. Recorded vote. Should it be adopted to go ahead.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. So again of Ms. Cook, Ms. Cook. We have bylaws that permit pigeons.
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, we do.
Do we have complaints, in particular from an ex-counselor who's been trying to help residents who live next to pigeons?
Through you, Madam Speaker, there is an item outstanding from Licensing and Standards Committee regarding a particular address related to pigeons, yes.
So it's an ongoing problem in some areas with the noise from pigeons?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that's a... One specific incident or one specific issue that I probably ought not to be discussing.
So top cities that allow hen houses. So Las Vegas allows hen houses?
Through you, Madam Speaker, they do permit for backyard hens to be kept.
Amsterdam permits hen houses?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, they do permit backyard hens to be kept.
And now we're being asked in Toronto to permit hen house.
Through you, Madam Speaker, we are being asked to consider a pilot for the keeping of backyard hens.
And you'd have to have inspectors that could go out and inspect hen houses if we approve that?
Through you, Madam Speaker. If a pilot is approved, we will set out the terms and conditions that we feel are appropriate, and we'll take the necessary enforcement or inspection action depending upon the circumstances we encounter.
Chief Building Official. Same similar questions. Do you have bylaws for hen houses?
The building code actually regulates accessory structures once the footprint area of the structure goes over 100 square feet.
So any hen house that we would want to do in the city, similar to Las Vegas and Amsterdam, you have bylaws for?
Yes.
Okay, as far as the noise bylaw, I guess it's back to Tracy Cook. How would you measure the noise that was from a hen house? To say it was different, difficult.
So through you, Madam Speaker, we are actually undertaking a review of the noise bylaw and would have to consider how the keeping of backyard hens may or may not impact noise in communities.
So could... Would you call this... Would you call that a noise that you could possibly deal with if a neighbor was complaining? Because it's not louder than the noise bylaw.
Through you, Madam Speaker, noise is subjective, and that's why we're undertaking the noise bylaw. One man's music and it's another man's nuisance. We would have to deal with the situations that arose as they arose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mahavik to speak. No, Counselor Mahavik held it, so he's the first speaker.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to put the motion on the table. Basically, the request of my colleague counselors is to allow a pilot to go on in five words, words five, 13, 21, 32. Those are the words of Counselor De Ciano, Counselor Dusset, myself, and Counselor, sorry, McMahon, for a period of up to three years with an interim review at 18 months. The participants of the program would have to register. There'd be a limit of four per property. It would not be allowed in apartment buildings, as they are in New York, by the way, condominium buildings or properties without sufficient outdoor space. They would determine what that... The definition of that. The participants would have to agree to regular inspections. No roosters would be permitted. They would have to comply with all the applicable care of animals laws and bylaws, and they would remain the owner's property unless they went off property, in which case they obviously would be considered at large in the city. And they... The products of the hens would not be able to be offered for sale, and so they'd be for one's own personal use. Public health would also monitor this, along with the Toronto Food Policy Council, to make sure that everything is on the up and up. And I understand that there's another motion coming, adding additional boundaries, fences, protocols around this. Madam Speaker, I was around when the six municipalities, some of us were, and we had to combine our animal control bylaws. Some municipalities had allowed it, some didn't. And I remember though that day because we were debating amongst ourselves, well, where should we put hens? And it really... It took all of about two seconds to say, ah, no, let's worry about that at another time. It wasn't a thoughtful position. We allowed pigeons, we allowed rabbits, we allowed guinea pigs, we allowed cats, we allowed dogs. But some people like hens. And there is no reason why, when a resident comes from another country, another place, urban area, rural area, who comes to Toronto, when they are able to do it in their country or place of origin, should not be able to do and have those pets here in the city of Toronto. What's the context? Why am I so passionate about this particular issue? And it is serious. We have a very strong urban agricultural movement in the city of Toronto. That's why they're pounding on our doors for urban gardens. That's why they're pounding on our doors for food that is made... That is produced as close as possible to where it is consumed, that is healthy, that is, that where people know the origins of that food. That's really how to understand, that's one angle to understand what is happening here. So there's a move... There are many folks that are supporting it, many very prominent organizations, including the Toronto Food Policy Council, the Toronto Urban Growers, those are the people doing our community gardens all over the place. They see a real positive benefit to this possible program. People might not know, but we actually already endorsed doing this in the 2002, Grow TO, an Urban Agricultural Action Plan for the city of Toronto. One of its recommendations was to allow backyard hens to be kept in the city. Chickens are just one part of a healthy urban food system that can operate and provide food for residents in an affordable and ethical way. Now, some people say that this is going to invite bad practice with hens, and I think my colleague last council meeting spoke of some of the things that might happen. Well, I ask you, is factory farming fair to any hen? Absolutely not. Those chickens never are allowed to stretch beyond a very... They just never stretch. That's how our eggs are produced today. That factory farming is cruelty to animals. Now, unless you are an absolute vegan, if you eat chicken or if you eat eggs, then this is a much fairer and more humane way of raising... this is a much fairer and more humane way of raising chickens. On the public health issue, a Vancouver public health study was done a few years ago, no problem was identified there. The trial period would be short, it's not in other people's ward, I say, give the movement a chance to do its work, to figure this out, and we'll come back with the, with a good report saying exactly what our experience was.
Thank you.
So please, folks, give this a chance, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Kerr Giannis has a motion, clarification?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I was wondering if the councillor would think about also the allowing roosters in the mix?
No, no, you don't need, you don't need a rooster for the eggs, and frankly, I think the noise would be too much, the noise would be too much, the best practice is frankly just to allow the hens and not the rooster.
Have you seen the decibels of chickens and roosters, and if the noise is any different?
Clarification of the motion, Madam Speaker.
Clarification of the motion?
There is, there is a difference.
The motion, councillor Kerr Giannis, the motion is right there, why don't you look at the motion and ask questions?
I did, and I've asked him if he would, if he has considering, he says it's the noise, therefore the noise, my follow-up question is, has he checked anything about the noise? That's part of clarification.
No, that's not part of the motion, like, the motion was just given to you.
You know what, I give up, I give up, I've asked him if you would consider, in the motion, if you would consider roosters.
And he said no.
And he said no, and because of the noise, and I've asked him if you heard anything about the noise, a follow-up question, which part of that, am I out of line?
Yes, what I've heard is that, and I've heard broadly, and I've experienced personally in other urban areas where roosters are allowed, is that they are, they do wake you up in the morning, they can wake you up at sunrise.
Councillor, I'm going to allow you to listen to something, and I'm...
Okay, this, this is not clarification, councillor Kerr Giannis. Okay, I, I don't know, like, there's, the motion is right here, you need to ask questions on the motion, that's what questions are for. I'm sorry, but that's, those are the rules, councillor. Councillor De Beermaker to speak, councillor De Beermaker to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'm wondering if the clerks could put up my motions, I just have two amendments to the staff report, which I'll be supporting, of course, the staff report and these two amendments, one which is, allows earth rangers to continue using their existing skunk, pine marten, armadillo, and porcupine for educational purposes in the city of Toronto until January 1st, 2021, and we were going to say, or until they die, whichever is first, but we just thought we would leave that out, so this just allows the earth rangers to close down their show over time, they're happy, they're happy to do it, they're willing to do it, they understand the changing values of society, and they have these animals, they're very specialized animals, so they've asked for a small extension, as well the Toronto Zoo, we're making a, I'll call it a technical amendment, to say Toronto Zoo animals instead of Toronto Zoo premises, which allows the Toronto Zoo to take some of their animals, like rattlesnakes, down to the hospital for sick children, out to the airport, out to the police training facilities, to show them what rattlesnakes look like, because apparently, that's one of the things they have to do. And the second motion, just ask staff to report back in the first quarter of 2018 on what's called the advantages and merits of a positive list for the regulation of animals, and, and that's primarily because unfortunately nowadays we're finding with the internet, anybody, anywhere with a computer and with a Visa card can purchase about any organism they want on this planet, on the internet, and get it shipped through Canada Post or courier company, and so we're asking staff to look at the possibility of a positive list, which says, before you import any type of exotic animal into this city, you have to make sure that you're properly qualified, and there's an ability to take care of it, and it does not pose a threat, like other invasive species do, into the local natural ecosystem. So with that, Madam Speaker, I would urge my colleagues to support the staff recommendations in these two amendments, although we are having a bit of fun with chickens, the prohibited animal list is here for a reason, and it's because we have to protect our neighbors, sometimes from themselves, or our neighbors from another neighbor who wants to bring in a baby tiger, for example, that we've had in the city in the last year, where somebody thinks it's cute and fun to bring in all sorts of animals, and again, it literally puts people in harm's way, those animals are not taken care of properly, and when you get into the smaller ones, I will call them, we have these fly-by-night organizations that are handling animals and creatures they should not be handling, they are putting children at risk, they are putting the public at risk, and they're actually putting those animals at risk too, and in the end, it's the city animal services that has to clean up the mess. So I'm just urging people to support the staff report and these amendments, thank you.
Thank you. We do have two questions for you, councillor De C, clarification of the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, councillor, your second motion, B, asking for a positive list, does the province not have a positive, I seem to remember that someone has a positive list?
To my knowledge, no.
Would this positive list not be so extraordinarily long that that's why we have the prohibited list?
No, there are people who don't like the positive list, will tell you that, but we have all sorts of people who call themselves hobbyists, who import all sorts of exotic animals into this city, that if they were released into High Park Pond, for example, they would wipe out much of the wildlife that's in there now, so this, this allows our staff to say, before you bring in anything you want into this city, you have to make sure it's approved by the city of Toronto, so that we know it doesn't impact High Park, or the High Park Pond, or the Don River, the Humber River, or harm children.
So you're not asking them to get rid of a list they've got now, you're asking them to add a positive list?
What we're asking them to do is report back in 2018 on the creation of a positive list, which is sort of the flip side of a negative list. Right now, we have a negative list saying, you can't have, for example, a penguin, however, there are other types of penguins that you could import into this city, and we would say, oops, we didn't prohibit it, and therefore, you're allowed to have it, so alligators, reptiles, fish, there are a lot of species that, again, we don't want released into our local ponds and our streams.
Thank you very much.
So Kerr Giannis, clarification?
Through you, to my colleague, Deputy Mayor, De Beermaker, now, once we do a positive list and a negative list, how would you address the issue if another municipality has, allows these animals to be there, and the individual goes to the airport, picks up the animal, and goes through the 401? How would you address that? I mean, are they going to be intervening, I mean, contravening this, this thing, I mean, the transportation of animals through our city?
I would leave that for staff to tell us about in the staff report that would come back to Licensing Committee, certainly my intention in this motion isn't for somebody who might be transporting some type of octopus, or squid, or eel, through our city.
Or tiger.
Or tiger, but if you wanted to own a tiger, or an octopus, or some type of eel, to have it at your house, that's when this would kick in, but I would leave that for staff to talk about the circumstances.
This is strictly for residential purposes, like for address where the animals would live, not for transportation?
That's correct, and commercial premises as well.
So if somebody was, let's say, to transport something through the city, according to this, and to, for a show?
That's fine, yeah.
So these, these people can have the animals outside the city, bring them into our schools, show the children, then transport back?
No, they're already would be prohibit, they're already prohibited from having, from those educational shows, if you will.
Well, is this, I don't see anything that you stayed in here, I mean...
No, there's two separate things, councillor Kerr Giannis, one is about the, quote, "educational shows," which the staff don't support, recommend it against, that's one thing, is the educational shows, the other one is just you or I keeping animals because we want to, or because we're hobbyists, so the prohibited list, or a positive list, tells you what you can or can't keep, not about what you can or can't show.
Have you spoken to any educational, any educators about a positive or a negative list?
Oh, yes, yes.
And can you expand a little bit more, how many educators have you spoken to, how many teachers, how many principals, or just, you just took it from staff?
No, I've taken it from staff, people like, people who work at the Toronto Zoo, at Zoo Check Canada, at the animal...
Teachers have you spoken to?
Pardon me?
How many teachers have you spoken to to arrive at this situation, or principals?
I haven't talked to any teachers about this issue.
Would you be surprised if I were to tell you that none of the teachers were consulted?
Yeah, I think we, through you, Madam Chair, I think we had this discussion at the Licensing Committee, we asked our executive director if she was satisfied with the level of public consultation, they did in fact get formal responses, if I'm trying to look over that way, from the Toronto School Board, and I think from the Catholic School Board, but I think for sure the Toronto Public School Board, so educational representatives were there, and they supported the staff recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ford, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, through you, Madam Speaker, to my colleague, so my question, councillor, is on your first motion, on the amendment.
Yes.
So this is for earth rangers, for educational purposes, my office have received some complaints from other organizations who have wanted this bylaw extended, staff have said that they would not recommend that, so my question to you is that, is this staff recommended, and what is the difference between earth rangers and any other, why are we giving earth rangers an exemption here?
Certainly, through you, Madam Speaker, earth rangers is a well-established, well-known national charity that raises millions of dollars a year, has professional veterinarians and professional handlers and professional trainers, has insurance, and I can't remember what their insurance is, of millions of dollars, so they are not quite on the, on the par of the Toronto Zoo, because the Toronto Zoo is the largest holder of animals in Canada, but they have the knowledge base and the experience and the insurance that gives me a comfort level, that they're going to take care of these animals until they pass, if it's next year, or till the state's up, so the earth rangers, unlike some of the groups, they're not opposing our bylaw, all they asked was for more time, because they have these very specialized creatures, and they're going to sort of retire them, and once they're retired, nothing goes back in, my understanding with some of the groups, they may not be the same ones that we're both talking about, but some organizations just didn't agree with this at all, and just wanted to be exempt, and I don't support that exemption with a blank check, saying you can do it as long as you want, this organization's, I think, demonstrated to me that they're responsible enough, and they're not opposing our legislation, they're agreeing with it, they've just asked for a little bit more time, so I don't even think it'll be to 2021, because animals don't live that long often.
Right, and has Animal Services, have you run this amendment by Animal Services?
Yes, I did it in cooperation with Animal Services staff, I don't want to put words in their mouth, I think they didn't support specifically earth rangers, because they said again, well, if we as staff, pick one and not the other, it's very difficult for us as staff to do that, so it would be more of a council decision, and if you, as one of our animal advocates, thinks that's reasonable, then you can move it, and we're comfortable if you adopt it as council.
Councillor De Ciano.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I also have a motion, if we can put that up, it's very similar to councillor Mahavik's motion, and it's really not rocket science, I mean, the parameters of these two motions come from mostly municipalities that already allow backyard chickens, so we're talking rear yard setbacks, we're talking guidelines for enclosures, we're talking about a pilot project, most importantly, on item number five, it's State City Council Director, Executive Director, Municipal Licensing and Standards to include in the report back, this is what's so important, is that we have a pilot project, and we're going to ask that we report back to the Licensing and Standards Committee at the end of the pilot, details including complaints received, very legitimate, actions taken, another very legitimate thing we should track, staffing and resource impacts, and financial impacts. Madam Speaker, you know, it gets to me sometimes when most people in this room publicly would say that they are not, you know, supporters of the Donald Trump-style politics that we're seeing in the United States, but it's become very apparent with some of my colleagues here tonight, that fact and reason are out the window, and that the politics of fear is what they prefer to practice, and it becomes, it becomes very unfortunate, because almost every negative fact I've heard about backyard chickens is not true, the science doesn't support it, the facts don't support it, the hundreds and hundreds of people already have chickens in their backyards today, their neighbors probably don't even know they have backyard chickens. I can tell you that, from experience, my father's got backyard chickens, my children love it, it's, there's, there's never been a health issue with my dad's chickens, it's been over five years, by the way, they're all still laying eggs, over five years old, another fact that, you know, while they, they lay eggs for two years, and then we have them for 10, it's not true, they continue to lay eggs, and the reason why people aren't going to get rid of their chickens is because chickens, believe it or not, are social animals, people like chickens as pets, so, you know, the, the, the noise, let's look at the existing municipalities in Ontario that can tell us, there is no noise from chickens, they don't make noise, look at, look at Niagara Falls, 500 dog complaints versus 10 chicken complaints last year for noise, I mean, we don't have to talk about, we don't have to bring fear out, let's just talk about the facts, there's enough municipalities in Ontario that, that allow backyard chickens, and it's not a problem, the reason why there isn't really the need for public consultation is because we already know how it works in all these other municipalities, and, you know, the argument that everybody's going to have chickens, and, you know, everybody's going to be ticked off, well, if everybody's got chickens, that means we're making the right decision, because everybody wants chickens, the fact is this, this is a hobby, okay, this is for people who are already intrigued, and spend a lot of time in the outdoors, and doing community gardens, and they're, and they're out there, and they want to, they want to bring their food closer to home, that's who's going to do this, it's not going to be the minute we, we approve this, there's going to be a rush to the farms out in, in country, in the countryside, and everybody's going to bring chickens back to Toronto, it's not going to happen, let's just be realistic about this, there's people in Toronto, myself included, that want that experience, and it's, there's no health concerns whatsoever, so I'm asking you to please not let the politics of fear get before you today, understand that, you know, if Toronto's going to be a great city, we're just going to follow so many other cities, big cities, that allow chickens in our communities, and we're going to do it based on motions that are going to ask our MLS team to look at best practices in other municipalities, and, and make it happen, so I hope everyone here will consider the pilot, and we can all learn from it, thank you very much.
Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'm feeling a little cooped up, in order to get cracking with the agenda, I'm going to call the question.
Well, the question's been called, recorded vote, there are a number of speakers still on the list, members, so I urge you...
No, he didn't speak.
No, he didn't, the question's been called, the question's been called, there are a number of members of councillor, there are a number of councillors that still want to speak, recorded vote.
You can't do that, Francis, you're one of them.
No, I know, yes, my name is there, I like, I want to speak. Councillor Palacio, councillor Holland, please.
The motion to call the question does not carry, the vote is 20 to 13, the required two-thirds majority has not been achieved.
Councillor Hart to speak?
Madam Speaker, I'll be very brief, I won't repeat all of the reasons that I feel that this is not a good idea, because everybody else has talked about it extensively. All I will say is I've received emails from some residents in some of the wards in the pilot area, and one of the things I would make sure that... pilot area, and one of the things I would make sure that counselors realize before they push their yes button on this, if that's what you're inclined to do, is that this item was not recommended, this pilot project was not recommended by staff. And because it was not recommended by staff, those people who would want to come and depute against it wouldn't realize that it would be on the floor of council. So the residents of these wards never had a chance to dispute, thinking that would be a pilot project. So I don't think that's really the way this council operates on matters like this. And I can tell you from my own experience, the list of prohibited animals is a list that took a lot of care in developing, a lot of community consultation along the way over a lot of years. And changing that list, I think, requires some community consultation. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Karagianis to speak.
Madam Speaker, I do have a motion, I'd like to put up, please. Following what the counselor said, I would like to have this sent back to the Licensing Standards Committee for further consideration, for people to come make deputations. I think it behooves us to make sure that we listen to our constituents, people have the right to be heard. So I would move this motion, please.
Thank you. So we do have a question. Counselor Mehevick, clarification.
No question.
There's no. Counselor Holliday, clarification of his motion.
Believe it or not, I want to clarify if Counselor Karagianis is looking at referring just the item on the chickens back to the committee, or the entire item, including some of the other amendments.
Just the items about the chickens. Okay.
That's what your motion says, unfortunately.
Are you, are you, want to have a?
Counselor Karagianis.
Madam Chair, I'll stand it down and fix it.
Yes. All right. Count? Okay. Counselor Perutza, please. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear myself, please. Like, Counselor Karagianis, you would like to withdraw your motion?
Would I be able to introduce just the chickens?
So Counselor, unless...
Madam Chair, I would like to withdraw and submit just the chickens, if you will allow it to be.
But, but you can't, because you've already moved the motion, already spoken.
I can't.
No, but maybe somebody else could move it on your behalf. Yes, okay? Thank you. So Counselor Robinson, there's no motion? All right? So Counselor Dussette.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I won't be very long. I just want to remind people actually why we started this report. As you heard when I was asking questions, we started this report because several counselors were concerned how animals were being treated. I have a photograph here, which I was going to put up, but I'm not going to do that, because I find it very upsetting, this photograph I have. And I'm sure last year, or the year before, many of us saw this kangaroo lying on a concrete floor, panting, no water in sight. That's what got some of us counselors saying, we have to protect these animals, they can't speak for themselves, but they are being removed from where they live, put in a vehicle, probably in a cage, put in a vehicle, and taken to a place they're unfamiliar with. And because it's usually short-term, they don't have the facilities there these animals need. So they don't have a nice soft bed, they don't always have a bowl of food, and they don't always have water. My understanding is they don't feed them too much when they're away from home, because food goes through an animal, and they don't want to have to clear that up during the visit there, or through transportation. Too much information, I apologize. I'm trying to be very good here. So we felt that this was cruel behavior. It actually doesn't matter what the animal is. We were looking at trying to protect these animals, we heard about a flamingo standing in a little bowl of water, we saw this kangaroo, we know of other animals taken away from their comfort zone, so that's really why we opened this up. However, I do support backyard chickens. I do not support roosters, because, believe me, I know from my experience growing up on an island with lots of farms around me, roosters crow at sunrise. It's not 7 o'clock, it's not 7 o'clock throughout the year, it's whenever that sun rises. And we don't want to bring that into a city, because that really, really, really will annoy people. You also heard me ask questions about beehives. Right now, the province allows residents to have a beehive on their property, but there's rules and regulations around that. There's, how close can it be to your neighbor's garden, you know, to the property line? You have to be registered. So the bees are protected. People love to have honey from their own bees. I think it's a great idea. But we are looking at hens, probably four hens, probably laying hens. Maybe you want to actually rent your hens, or maybe you actually rent, this sounds a bit strange, maybe you actually rent the egg, allow your children and your family to experience it hatching into chicks, grow the chicks to have the hens to lay the eggs. It's all amazing. When this came before licensing and standard in my first term, we had families come out, we had children come out, and tell us the experiences they were having having these hens as pets in their garden. These children hug these hens, it is a pet, it's just they live outside. We have pigeons, apparently we're allowed pigeons in our gardens, they live outside. The same sort of idea. So I do support this. Because this has been deferred from July, you probably don't have all the mail we've been receiving. We are at night item 161. And I guarantee you, the ones I read in July were in favor of backyard chickens. The ones we have here are in favor of backyard chickens. Residents are aware of what we are doing, and they have reached out and communicated to us. And they are in favor of this. Ones in my ward are in favor. We've also heard of other areas where these are allowed. Niagara Falls, Brampton, Guelph, Kingston, Victoria, Vancouver, Surrey. In the states, as an example, Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, Miami, Boston. It goes on and on and on. We are not the first to think of this. We are not going to reinvent the wheel. We are reaching out to these communities and saying, how did you get it to work? What are your pitfalls? How can we prevent that from happening here? This is a pilot project we're asking. We're not asking you all to accept backyard chickens in your wards yet. Let's do the pilot. Let's make sure it works. Let's make sure municipal licensing and standard gets their handle on how this is going to work.
Thank you, Counselor Dussette.
And I've run out of time. So please support the backyard hens.
Counselor Holliday?
Thank you, Speaker. I thought about this issue over the summer. A lot of information has come in about this, there's tons of resources online. But I think the answer was actually relatively simple. I thought about community council, and I thought about the typical York community council. And what I've learned in about three years of being a counselor is that a lot of my job has to do with conflict. Conflict between two neighbors, fighting over a hedge, fighting over a fence, maybe they're fighting over a barking dog, or some sort of an addition to a home. What concerns me about this is the potential conflict that arises out of us changing a law like this. Make no mistake about it, it's trying to be downplayed here, it's just sort of a fun hobby, it's, it's the introduction of livestock into the city for the purposes of farming. That's essentially what it is. We've got a bylaw in place that allows us to keep pets around. And pets are enough of a handful. You know this from your experiences in your ward. You've got clashes with dog owners, you've got dealings with dog parks. You've got enough conflict in a city that is constantly evolving into a more and more urban environment that is more and more dense. What happens is we crank up the pressure, the pressure goes back on the people, and these issues manifest, and they become something that a counselor has to deal with. I would urge you to think about this really, really carefully. As one of the other counselors mentioned, this is not a staff-initiated report. There isn't a human cry out of there to deal with chickens. It is something that has been introduced at a political level. And I want you to think very, very carefully about what the future is for this. Yes, it is a pilot project at this point in time, and it is contained. But should it become a larger item, you will now, along with trees, along with driveways, along with fence lines, along with noise bylaws, you will also be dealing with conflict between neighbors with respect to livestock and chickens at community council. And that's probably the first step as we go from chickens to the next type of animal, where the arguments are exactly the same. Please think carefully about the path we're about to embark on. It is a very dynamic shift that could possibly happen today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Holliday. Madam Speaker, you are next. Counselor Nunziata.
Yes, thank you very much. I know that there's a member of council will be moving a motion to refer Counselor Mehevick's motion back to licensing. It's really important that we refer it back and go through the public process that we should be doing. When, whenever we pass a bylaw, and even if it's a pilot, we did that with the Bluer Street bicycle, bicycle lanes, we consulted first, before we did the pilot. Whenever we implement any new bylaws, and even if it's a, if it's a pilot, we consult with the community. On this particular item, we haven't consulted at all. There are no deputations from the community at all. I'm on licensing. Not once did we discuss pilot project for chickens. And not once did we discuss certain wards in the city that wanted the pilot. First of all, Counselor Dussette and Counselor De Ciano, and I can't remember the other wards, Mehevick, that want the pilot, that's fine, that's great. Let's have a, let's have a community consultation meetings in those wards, and hear from those residents if they support it or not. Now, my ward, the rail track, is the boundary for Counselor Dussette's ward and my ward. What happens if the chickens from her ward come over the tracks and come into my ward? And my residents don't want these chickens?
Why did the chicken cross the tracks?
Like, where is the boundary here? Are we going to have specific bylaws, permits, where people have to apply for permits if they're going to build, what are they called? Chicken coops? Chicken coops? If they have to build a chicken coop, can they go up six feet, five feet, four feet? What is the bylaw? Do they have to, do residents that apply for the permit, do they need to get a petition with all the residents on the street, a majority? If you get 51%, then you can have a chicken coop in your backyard? What are the rules? We can't just pass the bylaw without consultation and say, live with it, and in 18 months, we're going to report back. That's wrong. That's not what we do. And as far as enforcement, we can't enforce the dog bylaw, the dogs. How many complaints do you get of dogs in the parks, pooping in the park, and we can't enforce the bylaw? We get them all the time, we can't enforce the bylaw. Why are we passing new bylaws when we can't enforce it? It's wrong. And if the members of council that want them in their wards as a pilot, God bless you, consult with your residents. If you come back with 51% of the residents saying yes, by all means, I'll support you. But until then, I will not support the pilot.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our next speaker is Counselor Perutza. Oh, Counselor Perutza, slow down. You may walk to your desk while we address the fact that it's almost 8 o'clock. Madam Speaker, do you want me to take the vote on, I'm looking, I'm canvassing for a motion to complete the item? I see a motion to complete the item. Yes, from Counsel, I see a motion for Counsel Perks to take a vote on that, so that we may know the will of the body. Recorded vote? Counselor Burnside is requesting a recorded vote. On, the motion from Counselor Perks is to complete the item we are currently addressing?
And the confirming.
And the confirming bills. As much as I'd like to vote often, I voted here.
The motion to extend the meeting to complete the item and pass the confirming bill does not carry. The vote is 14 to 20.
So I'm at the will of the secretary, I think we have to go right to the confirming bill then? It'll take that long to do the business. You could start us up then. You could kick-start us. You could kick-start us.
Counselor Ainsley, you have a motion to introduce the confirming bill.
I do. The leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceedings of City Council Meeting Number 32 on October 2, 2017.
Shall leave be granted into this, introduce this bill? Recorded vote.
Counselor Perutza, please. Counselor Wong-Tam. Counselor Perks, please.
Counsel Philion, please. Counsel Holland and Counsel Palacio, please.
Counsel Perutza, please.
Motion to introduce the confirming bill carries unanimously 35 in favor.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? Recorded vote.
Counselor Creasy, Counsel Mehevick, please. Counsel Burnside.
Counsel Wong-Tam, please. Counsel Perutza. Counsel Davis. Counsel Carroll, please. And Counsel Perks.
The motion to enact the confirming bill carries 33 to 1.
Okay, thank you, members and staff. Recession till 9:30 tomorrow morning.